City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Reville. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
We've got seven to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 27, 2016, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. Divi launch in Evanston, Wally, who has all the facts on that?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. Katie Knapp, our Transportation and Mobility Coordinator is here. I think she was busy loading up the truck with bikes earlier today, so I think we're getting close.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, City Manager Balkowitz, and City Clerk Green. I'm Katie Knapp, Transportation and Mobility Coordinator. This evening, I'm pleased to share that the Divi Bike Sharing System will be launching in Evanston this week with 10 stations and 100 bikes. The launch of Divi represents a multi-year process that leverages an 80/20 mix of Illinois Department of Transportation, Transportation Enhancement Program grant funding for $320,000 and over $230,000 in local support from Northwestern University, North Shore University Health System, Valley Produce, and President St. Francis Hospital. This summer, Divi is adding over 100 stations and 1,000 bikes to the Divi system. Seventy of these additional 100 stations come through the $3 million in funding from the Illinois Department of Transportation. The IDOT funding supports eight of the Evanston stations, 12 of the Oak Park stations, and 50 of the Chicago stations. The expansion will extend the Divi stations from their 2015 northern expansion boundary at Two-E-Avenue to throughout the Rogers Park neighborhood and up to Central Street here in the city of Evanston. The 10 Divi stations are scheduled for their installation on Wednesday, June 29, and Friday, July 1, weather depending. The stations will be live upon their installation. For a full, up-to-date list of the live stations, riders can refer to Divi's Live Station Map at divibikes.com/stations. In anticipation of this summer's launch of the Evanston Divi Bike Share Stations, staff has partnered with a number of organizations, including Downtown Evanston, Rotary International, and the Evanston Public Library, to provide a vast array of bicycling education and encouragement programs. On June 10, the city partnered with Rotary International to host a sneak peak Divi ride from Howard Street CTA Station to Fountain Square, taking the northern portion of the proposed 49th Ward Neighborhood Greenway. The dozen Divi riders rode to Downtown Evanston where local bike shop Wheel &amp; Sprocket hosted a mobile repair stand, and the Evanston water truck was on hand encouraging riders to rethink their drink. On June 12, staff presented updates on the Evanston Divi Bike Share Expansion and Dodge Avenue Protected Bike Lane Project alongside presentations on Bike Repair 101, urban bike and motorist safety skills, and the benefits of social bicycling. On June 16, Divi's operators took staff on a tour of the Divi warehouse on a Facebook Live event. The tour covered the 10 Evanston Divi stations and the mechanics of the bikes and stations. The video was currently available on the city's Facebook page. And this Friday, as part of Downtown Evanston's Get Healthy Week, the city is hosting a two-mile free community Divi ride leaving at noon in Fountain Square. There are a few spots left, so we are encouraging interested riders to reserve their Divi bike at downtownevanston.org/get-healthy to secure their Divi for the bike ride. The city will be offering a special this summer for its community members. Community members who visit the city's Bike Evanston events, including the Get Healthy Divi Ride table this Friday from noon to 1:30 in Fountain Square, and the Streets Alive table on Sunday, August 14, will have the opportunity to secure one of the discount codes. The summer discount code will allow code holders to purchase an annual Divi membership for $75 instead of the standard rate of $99 or $995 per month for one year. Staff will announce through its Bike Evanston Twitter page, @BikeEvanston, when the summer discount codes will be available. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update.
Thank you very much. Now, because I am the mayor and everyone tells me, I see no lights. Does anyone have a question? You did a great job. Thank you. Now, because I'm always told I can do whatever I want, what I want to do with the agenda is to hear public comments from the beekeepers, who have very nice people from the Botanic Garden who have come to speak to us. You have nine minutes. They signed up for public comment, and they came earlier than they needed to for this meeting, so they've been waiting quite a while. Please go ahead.
My name's Lisa Hilkemberg, and I'm the Regenstein Fruit and Vegetable Garden Horticulturalist at the Chicago Botanic Garden. And I have our beekeeper here, who's a volunteer both at the Botanic Garden as well as at the Peggy Note of Art Museum, Anne Stevens. So this is the space, my office. I have a four-acre vegetable garden there, and I'd like to just share the success of our program. We have eight hives there, so we have an apiary of hundreds of thousands of bees by the end of the summer. The location of those hives are starred here, both in the nut grove and in the apple orchard. And I'd like to just discuss briefly the distances from the path that the hives are situated. So while I'm not an entomologist, I've laid out this setup, and then I manage the hives with Anne. So here I'm standing on the path, which is about 36 feet from four hives in the apple They're installing the bees this time. There's plenty of nectar and pollen sources for these pollinators. And you can see here, I took this today. It's not a very nice picture, but you can at least see the distance from the hives. We have a million visitors a year at the Chicago Botanic Garden, 1,100,000 visitors a year, so there's a... Certainly, a lot of people come through. I've been stung once. I've worked at the garden for seven years, and it's very rare that we have a visitor that's stung by a bee. So here we're installing the bees, and I know that you've had many presentations on beekeeping, so I won't spend too much time on that. Here we are, teaching classes. The students are standing within about 20 feet of the hives, and you can see that Here you can see the path below in the nut grove, so this again is about 35 feet from the path, and we feel very comfortable and safe with this distance. Here, we've disguised the hive kind of in some pinesflexless, so you can see the hive up in the center there. I think there's a... Maybe not. Up in the center, kind of in the... They're painted light yellow. And then, you know, the worst that can happen here is a swarm. So this is a queen that's taken her hive out of the bee box because they need more space. And so what happens is it looks like a hurricane. The bees congregate on a branch in a tree, in this case, in a walnut, and it's kind of a moving group of bees, and eventually they'll fly off if they're untended to. In this case, Anne kindly comes up from the city and takes the branch, cuts the branch off, and then we put it in a box, and she drives it in her car down to another organization that might need to establish a hive or add to theirs. This is a public, kind of an interpretive display at the Botanic Garden called the Bee Line, and you can see on the left side of the slide, there is a glass case, and that's where the bees live. And then up at the top, right next to the blue sign, is the ingress, and so that's where they come out. So you can see how close the hive is to the path. The white box on the... Kind of in the middle of the slide is just a demonstration hive, so people can have a look inside. But the bees are actually living in the glass case and then flying in and out up on the right, and we're completely comfortable with this. We have a volunteer beekeeper who takes care of this hive as well, and we have, you know, again, a million visitors a year, and it really is problem-free. A couple of thoughts that I had, and just maybe suggesting a few things that might be interesting, is to have some sort of secured case that's well-ventilated to store beekeeping equipment, if that's something that a homeowner or a public space could provide. This is our beekeeping cabinet, where we stack equipment during the off-season because the bees are attracted to things that are full and sticky of honey. This is a picture of a pollinator strip. This is just a strip of plants that provides pollen source for bees at successive bloom times throughout the year, so that there's a place for them to go. They don't fly away. They have certainly lots of food sources close by. This is in an orchard in France. This is the First Lady's Hive at the White House. I visited it in October, and I'd just like to point out that this is within 45 feet of the ellipse fence that goes around the White House. And you can see here that they have the southeast aspect, which is the appropriate opening for the hive, and they have one hive, and you can see it here from the fence. I don't have a highlighter, but the tree on the left side with that little white square is where the hive is, and it's well in front of the red begonias. So it's... I figure it was between 40 and 50 feet away from the fence line, a public space. And so I leave you with that, and I thank you for having me. And if I can answer any questions or support anyone's work, let me know.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for waiting. I really appreciate it.
On it all.
And you look so healthy and tanned.
Well, I haven't been home yet, and it's almost my bedtime, because I get up at 4:00.
Because the bees get up early, I suppose. This is... For the council, this is a discussion that has come out of Human Services, where we had been talking about possibly introducing areas for beekeeping in our public gardens, and we knew nothing. And so that's why it's helpful to have you here. Leslie's been great in offering us her knowledge, but just knowing that these seem to be passive, peaceful, little working insects that aren't really looking to harm anyone, and your experience with that, I think bears out the fact that we probably should be thinking a little bit more along these lines.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does that conclude all the beekeeping information? Oh, did you want to speak?
I have a public comment, but I can wait for another time.
You can come... Let's do bees right now.
Thank you. There may be a public comment. So I don't know... So I'm concerned that... My name's Leslie Shadd. I'm from Evanston, and I've spoken before about bees several times, so I really appreciate everything that you do. I don't know how much you know about the beekeeping proposal, but I just am going to be blunt about what I think about it. I really feel like this is... I honestly feel like this is a vote to end beekeeping in Evanston. There are only two permitted behives in Evanston, and we're adding additional regulation. You know, the proposal is to have a notice period, which would seem completely reasonable, and then a period after that in which there would be an opportunity for the people who received notice to have a hearing, and then that would come before the Human Services Committee. But I just want to point out, New York, Chicago, and LA do not impose a notice requirement because they can't afford the level of investment in public education it would take for beekeepers to survive the notice requirement and appeal procedure. Notice and appeal before permit, in reality, cutting to the chase, I think it's consent to beekeeping. Neighbors are not going to consent to beekeeping because they have no interaction or understanding of honeybees. The proposal to put 150-feet buffer around honeybees in Evanston public parks, which even if there are 150 feet, I don't know how much space that allows in Evanston, it still means that the public is not going to see or have access to bees or be educated by them. And the statement has been made in the city memos, which I also respect the city approach to this, but it says that this is a remedy for human health, and in reality, this doesn't fix the human health issue because the notice requirement is only at the outset of a bee permit, and then after that, there is no subsequent notice, and if residents move in or out, there's no change in that. The real fix, which was what New York, Chicago, and LA do, is the nuisance requirement, which does protect anything, including an animal that is offensive or dangerous to life or the safety of any person residing or traveling through an area. So really, it's the notice requirement that is what solves this. And I just want to put forward, here's a different vision with the White House. Evanston puts a hive in every ward. We only have two hives currently now permitted. Hives are visible in public locations at each civic center, the Ecology Center, Fountain Square, as is possible in other public areas to inform people about bees. Signs inform people about honeybees, including residential pesticide use, for example, and then that would go some distance for allowing there to be some notice requirement that works without killing bees, or else we just do what Skokie did, which is what to put in a notice requirement with no education, and so you have no bees, hot behives in Skokie. So that's the end of my spiel for you.
Thank you. Does everyone else who wants to speak on beekeeping live in Evanston?
Yes.
Okay, so you can wait for public comments, the way that everyone else has to. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the mayor's public announcements. Oh, and Alderman Tendem, did you want to ask a question?
It's about bees. I can wait if you...
You better ask it before the experts leave.
I did want to know how, at the Botanical Garden, is there signage up to warn people of any possibility of bees?
Yes, yes. We have an ephemeral sign.
Can you come to the microphone?
We have an ephemeral sign that's in front of the hives that says, "Do not approach the hives," or, you know, it explains problems, it explains successes, whatever it is. We use that signage all throughout the garden. So it's... People are warned about that. You know, if they're afraid of bees, that that's where they should stay, right on the path, 35 feet away.
So that's... The proximity of the sign is not until you get to that 35 or what you consider a safe buffer, not like when you enter or you leave the reception or the gift shop.
Right. There's no warning, or there's not a... No. No, there's all kinds of wildlife at the garden, you know, of all kinds, but yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Alderman Fisk.
I'm sorry, one more. So you thought you were going to run out. I just can't let them go.
So 35 feet seems to be a safe distance, in your experience?
We're very comfortable with that. I have a first aid kit in the Fruit and Vegetable Garden office, where we have a medicine stick or a medicine swab that's just a little antiseptic that'll take the sting away if anybody is stung. But again, I've been there seven years, and I've had two or three people stung by probably wasps or, you know, another insect. As long as there's nothing in the ingress, it's like O'Hare, you know, they just really need a runway. They need to have that distance, you know, 10 or 15 feet, and you don't really want to block it by plant material, but you can certainly hide it so it's not so exposed. And I think thoughtful beekeeping and maintaining them at a high level of care is really important, and certainly a great message for the public.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple. First, Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, was here to talk about our recognition from United Way of Northwest. Had an event not too long ago.
Good evening, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Clerk Green, Marty Lyons, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, would just like to give recognition to all city staff, especially Janelle Harden, my assistant, who helped organize our United Way campaign this year. This year, we were the lead municipal agency for the Northwest United Way. We were the winner of the Innovation Award for all of the new techniques that we used. The city manager was instrumental in that. We did a rent-the-city-manager's space for a day. We did a breakfast.
Parking space.
What's that, parking space?
Parking space.
Yes. Mark Munzer offered his office for a day, so he had all sorts of things that would...
Oh, you left one out, Mr. Assistant City Manager.
I was getting there.
Okay. Don't worry, Lee.
The Assistant City Manager offered to cook breakfast for five staff, and I thought I was going to get away with doing a breakfast, raise $50 or $60, $70, and a very generous benefactor bid the amount up to $250. And therefore, I had to do quite a breakfast for a group of... In this case, it was a group of managers that were treated to a great breakfast that I did cook almost all by myself, and we did that here at the Civic Center. But seriously, the city surpassed our neighbor, Skokie, which had been first place before, and we were first place. So an excellent campaign this year shows that Evanston, the employees of the city of Evanston are a giving group, and we hope to continue on with our successes next year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alderman Tendem.
In addition, there was a presentation. The featured speaker was from Cradle to Career. Is it Mary or Mayor?
No. Sheila.
Sheila Mary.
Sheila Mary.
Yes.
Yes, and so she added another, you know, sort of attention. So all eyes were on Evanston that day.
I would like to add to that. Thank you for the reminder, Alderman. She was the only one asked to speak, was given 10 minutes as a part of the presentation. The Cradle to Career was definitely seen by the entire luncheon as a huge step forward by a community that wants to do a program that brings in a variety of funders and participants in a cooperative venture. So it was seen as a very innovative way to continue services that the United Way supports, so congratulations to them.
Thank you very much.
Next, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask Oscar Murillo to come to the podium. As I believe many of you know, Oscar is ending his year with us as an ICMA Local Government Management Fellow. His last day is tomorrow. We wanted to take this opportunity to recognize his fine work on behalf of the staff. As you know, city council meetings are a big part of Oscar's job. He deals with the bills list. We provide the community a summary of the council meeting, so people can sign up for that on email, and so we provide that the next day. So for those who are interested in finding out what happened, Oscar has done that. Oscar's also been really instrumental in a number of key projects. He's worked with the Human Relations Commission, and he has authored the long-incoming narrative we have put together on the township of Evanston and how the process that the city went through to make that change. It is something we get asked for a lot. We see... We've not really talked about it in this venue, but we see a lot of township officials from around Illinois who come through Evanston and are interested in what we've done. So we now have a white paper that Oscar has authored, which we'll be finalizing and getting out here over the next several days. Probably the most memorable time with Oscar was one of the first weeks he was here. We had the Jalisco event, I think, Madam Mayor, you were at that, and someone pulled the fire alarm. And so there was pandemonium at the Levy Center as people were coming out there. And who took charge of the situation but the two-week-on-the-job Local Government Management Fellow, who made sure that we found the fire alarm panel, the firefighters got everything they need, and made sure people got back into the facility so the event could go on. So Oscar, you really distinguished yourself here during your time with the city of Evanston. Oscar is relocating back to the West Coast and is looking at job opportunities, I guess mostly in Northern California and perhaps the Seattle area, depending on what comes to pass. So he's going to be able to reunite with some family members as well as continue his career in local government. So Oscar, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your outstanding work this past year. We're going to miss you, and I have a small token of appreciation.
Thank you. (applause)
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, City Manager Balkowitz, and City Clerk Green. I just would like to express my gratitude to all of you for your support of the Local Government Management Fellowship. Ultimately, you guys approved the funding for the position. You've done so in the past, and it looks like you're going to continue to do so in the future. I think it's... Obviously, I have a personal benefit in that I've gained an experience and that it's helped me out and will prepare me for the next step. I think from a more objective standpoint, it's an important program to help prepare the next generation of aspiring city managers, so for that, I thank you. I'd also would like to thank specifically Wally and Erica Storley for their mentorship, for their providing me opportunities to get a broad array of experience in different aspects of the city, including the budget, working with the council, working with state representatives, working with the commissions, and among many other things. So for that, I'm very grateful, and I've had a great time. I hope that someday in the future, when I'm an old man, retired, I can look up Google City of Evanston, see that y'all have put the issue of the Harley Clark Mansion to rest. So thank you. (laughter)
Oscar, wish you a long and happy life. And Madam Mayor, we're happy to report, we have a new management fellow. They'll be starting with us on July 11, and she will take over the responsibilities that Oscar's had. So again, thank you, Oscar, very much. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to make an announcement from the... Got in the mail today that there'll be summer meals free for all children 18 and under, and they can get a free, healthy, nutritious meals when they're out of school. To find a summer meal site, you can call either 800-359-2163, or text FOODIL to 877877, or visit thesummermealsillinois.org. I'll also make sure that this is on the website, on the clerk's website, probably tomorrow or Wednesday. And that concludes my announcements for today. Mayor?
Thank you very much. City Manager, do you have another announcement?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. Laura Biggs, the city engineer, is here. As I know, many of you are aware, we have received word from IDOT to have a number of our capital projects stand down prior to the end of business on June 30 because of IDOT's expected inability to pay bills despite funding sources from outside of Illinois. So Laura, maybe you could just talk about the projects that are impacted and what we're doing right now to wind those projects to a point where we can leave them be if need be.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, honored members of the council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the Bureau Chief of Capital Planning. So we did receive notice from IDOT last Tuesday that we have two projects affected by the state budget issue. One is the Emerson Ridge-Green Bay intersection project, and the other is the Dodge Avenue Bike Lane Restriping that is happening. Neither of these are actually funded by the state of Illinois, but rather funded through the federal agencies or the city of Evanston, but IDOT manages them, pays the contractor, and then gets reimbursement, and because they won't have the budget authority to pay the contractors, they're shutting the projects down. So in preparation for that, on Emerson Ridge-Green Bay, they were in the middle of Phase 1 of the project, which is to install the water main on Green Bay Road. They got the water main to a stopping point. It's not completely installed, but it's at a good position to temporarily stop the project. And then they have been restoring the road surface, patching it with a surface course so that it will be drivable for potential long-term shutdown, and then the contractor will remove all the traffic control, open up the lanes, and remove all the stored equipment and materials off the site. And then on the Dodge Avenue Bike Lane Restriping, that's a much simpler project. The contractor basically removes the previous bike lane restriping in the morning, and then in the afternoon, puts back the new location bike lane restriping, so they don't really have much to demobilize, and so they're just continuing to work this week, and then they'll be off the site on Thursday. We expect that Emerson Ridge-Green Bay, we should be completely off the site by Wednesday and a day.
How much is that going to cost us in addition for this nonsense?
I don't have an exact contract or cost. I would guess the order of magnitude is in the low tens of thousands, but the... And IDOT has just directed... and IDOT has just directed us to keep track of the costs separately without really indicating how it gets reimbursed.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
But Laura, the contractors have places to work after they completed this job. So are they then going off to the next job and maybe not be able to come back to complete this job this season?
Well, because of the way the contract is structured, they get so many working days. And when IDOT declares that the working days start, that starts their clock ticking. Emerson Ridge-Green Bay in particular is a very, very tight construction timeframe. So if there's any appreciable length of shutdown, they are probably not going to be able to finish it in 2016. But they will have to get back here because they'll be burning their working days. The Dodge Avenue bike lane restriping, the majority of the work will actually be complete. It won't be final, but they've been making really quick progress on that project. And it's the same situation. They just only have so many working days.
So it sounds like you're thinking it's not going to be that long before we get positive.
I hope it won't be that long. We are preparing for it to be as long as it is.
And Alderman Rainey, to that point, we've worked, especially with ALAMP. They are not going to completely demobilize out of Evanston. We're making some space available for them so they can park their equipment. I think we're hopeful that this will be resolved by the end of the week. If so, then we'll be able to ramp back up. So they've agreed to not bring all their heavy equipment back to Bolingbrook, which is where it resides, but they will leave it here in Evanston, at least, I would imagine, for several days. And I think we'll have a better idea probably the first part of next week where we stand.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
And, you know, this is just outrageous, right? This is just ridiculous, outrageous, and I'm disgusted. And not with you, of course.
I can't yell at Laura, though. She's the only person standing there.
So I've already reached, I've managed to track down one of our state legislators today, and I encourage all of my colleagues to do that and to reach out to all of your constituents and get people to voice an opinion. It's my understanding they're going down to Springfield on Wednesday. This is something that they're not paying for, right?
No.
Right. So they're not even paying for it, and they're going to make us shut it down. And so, you know, oh, we're going to have a budget. They don't have a budget. It's a joke. It's ridiculous. So, you know, I'm tired of it, done with it. But we need to start speaking up. People need to start saying something, you know. Madigan did this, Rounder did this, you know. We need to let the people in Springfield know that they all need to do their jobs. They need to go there and do their jobs and get it done and not leave us hanging out to dry, so.
I agree with you, but a lot of us have spoken to them. I'm more than willing to. Alderman Fisk, did you?
Well, my question was answered, but maybe we put up a few large signs in Evanston saying, "This delay is brought to you by your friends in Springfield." I mean, I absolutely agree with Alderman Wilson. It's crazy. So do we have any idea if this is going to affect projects going ahead for next year?
I do not have a good idea of that.
What's your crystal ball saying?
Very little in the way of magical crystal balls on this. The projects that would be similarly impacted next year would be the Sheridan Roadwork, which is funded also through a federal grant that is passed through with IDOT. And that's the single biggest one. We have funding for the MFT resurfacing, which was awarded in May by the city council, and that is funded basically out of last year's MFT funds. But if we don't get MFT funds, then we would really be reduced in our amount to do resurfacing next year.
Because I want to be really careful, Madam Mayor, that the city council and the City of Evanston not be blamed for this when people are driving down and they see that. It's not our fault.
It is not our fault, but I can guarantee you, we will be blamed. Thank you, well, sort of thank you, Laura. It was very brave of you to get up here and tell us that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, does that conclude? All right, next is public comment. The first four names I'll call, please speak in the order. I call your name, and you each have three minutes. Wendy Pollak, Lisa Deeskin, Leslie Shad, and Brad Taylor.
Thank you. I guess it's me. I'm Wendy Pollak. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on the proposed ordinance regarding the proposed merging of the Environment Board and the Ladd Arboretum Committee. I'm a member of the Ladd Arboretum Committee. And just very, very briefly, I think that it would be helpful to take a little bit more time than the current schedule allows to work through some of the issues that were raised around this proposal. I will say the Ladd Arboretum Committee does agree about the efficiency, and we're all for it. The committee's been around for almost forty years, and that's okay. You know, it probably isn't the best format for doing the kind of work that's most needed right now for the arboretum. But a couple of thoughts. One is, there's a really long history of collaboration around some very detailed issues that come up in the arboretum between citizen groups and the city staff, and it's been very, very productive. And just, for example, recently, after the hiatus of last year with the construction project, there was a planting of oak, a grove of oak trees in the fall with a lot of participation by citizens and the city staff. We, you know, did it together. And this year, with all those native plantings that we now have in the arboretum, it takes a lot of work to maintain them. We have put in roughly a hundred-and-fifty hours of work over there with thirty-five to forty people, including a group of seventh graders. And so the citizen group, the Friends of the Ladd Arboretum, we're calling ourselves, they really are essential. So this, it's different from Friends of the Park. So that was the second point I wanted to make, that there isn't really, as far as I know, a good structure right now within the city for the kinds of citizen steward groups that are needed to take care of some of these more natural settings. And so that's where I think maybe a little bit more time would help to figure that out and make it a little bit clearer in this proposed new ordinance what the relationship is between that group. And I would say the Ladd Arboretum Committee had already begun morphing into Friends of the Ladd Arboretum. So it's pretty much in existence right now as an organized volunteer effort. And I think that, just to give one example of a couple of changes in the ordinance language that we might want to think about, one proposes that there be two designated slots out of eleven for people who know about arboretums. But I think, for example, it might be better to have liaisons with the Friends of the Ladd Arboretum. And that's more actually knowledge of the ecology and natural settings than arboretums as such. And the other is that there seems to be some kind of a restriction proposed on an independent group raising money and spending it to improve the Ladd Arboretum. So that, I think, might be what worked on as well. So basically, yes, I think it's a great idea to have a consolidated group and an environment board that's supportive of an independent Friends of the Ladd Arboretum. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Hildenberg and Leslie Shad already spoke.
All right. Thank you. Brad Taylor? Corinne Guera, Lisa Hildenberg, and Priscilla Giles. Okay, Priscilla, I know you're here.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I just want to speak briefly about the conversation I heard about the goodwill. Goodwill accepts donations from people who remodel their high-end homes and those who don't, downsize as well as others. So people who shop there will be of all classes. It is, if the plaza is going to be fully, if the fully occupied plaza will provide jobs, and hopefully, as always promised, taxes will be reduced due to the added income. What I would like for the city council to think about, to remember, that if Evanston is to be a diverse community, all of its citizens must recognize the diversity of all of its citizens. The nuisance ordinance invites harassment. I know because I live on a street where it happened. It invites harassment by some people who feel different cultures are a threat to the way, to their way of life, even if it is not the culture they brought in to the community when they came. Speaking of crime, but solely differences in culture, difference doesn't mean bad.
Thank you. Nancy Schwartz and Michael Schwartz?
Hi, my name's Nancy Schwartz from Hall Terrace. And as most of you know, I am the lady who, one year ago, began the process to hopefully amend the bee code. For those who may not know, quickly and quite simply, I have lupus and autoimmune disease, and I am highly allergic to bee stings. For me, the next sting could be fatal. A hive was installed by our next-door neighbor, and we were never notified. And for me, medically, this is an extremely high-risk situation. My hope is that you will pass the amended code so that notification to immediate neighbors is required, and there is an appeal process to protect anyone at risk. I appreciate all the efforts to make this a reality, and of course, it's very important to me. I am in no way trying to end beekeeping in Evanston, just simply trying to protect the health and safety of all residents. Again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Schwartz. I'm Nancy's husband. Also live at Hall Terrace. And I was also equally impressed by the presentation that was given by the Botanical Society. But it seems that the beekeeping advocates are viewing what we're trying to accomplish as a ban on bee colonies. In Evanston, this is not our position, never was. What we are doing is seeking a process for those at genuine risk to avoid a bee colony in proximity to a residence. I wish to make a few additional comments on the proposed revision to the bee code, especially to those who are on the fence or opposed to change. Please keep in mind that the changes are not a major change or addition to the requirements of the current bee code, except for a simple notification process and appeal process. It doesn't stop prospective apiarists from keeping bees or so onerous as to prevent prospective beekeepers from applying for a permit. The change, the changes add what common sense says should have been in place at the beginning of the process. It brings common sense to the ordinance by requiring notification of all adjacent property owners, renters, et cetera, as well as a process to appeal approval of the permit. It merely informs concerned citizens that an apiary has been requested. If there are concerns, and an appropriate filed appeal, it is heard by the Human Services Committee, who have the ability to rule on the merits of the individual appeal. An appeal is not an automatic denial, as some people are thinking, of the use of property, but an avenue for those with legitimate concerns. The appeal is not an avenue for the angry vindicative neighbor, but an avenue for those who may have a documented medical reason, like my wife, that a bee sting could have dire consequences or possibly fatal. I would like to think that the bees read the books and articles about their docility. However, I don't believe they have, and thus will sting if they feel threatened. In the interest of bringing common sense and some little measure of protection to those who may need it, I urge you to seriously consider, and when the vote comes, to pass favorably on the proposed changes in the bee code, as it does not establish roadblocks to a person's desire to have a bee colony. It is a change in favor of communication and openness. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Jason Schwartzwald, Dan Schwartzwald, and Hafiz Yagul.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm speaking in regards to special assessment for repaving one of the alleys that my property sits on. Basically, I'm kind of contesting the way that it's allocated by using the unit measure. I think I'm unfairly being charged, you know, or five, you know, five times what, you know, a single-family residents would, therefore paying for twelve-and-a-half percent of the entire project, which is unfair and unjust. And I'm looking for, you know, a little bit of relief. I'm all for the project. I just think the amount is unfair.
Okay. Thank you. We don't respond or debate public comments.
Okay. Thanks.
Just, can you tell us which one of the three it is?
Yeah.
All right, fourteen oh four Darrow. So, you know, Darrow hits the alley there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Schwartzwald. I'm Jason's father. We were at the meeting two weeks ago, and a couple of issues that we brought up that somebody was supposed to check out. Number one, we don't believe you have fifty percent, because if you check the PIN numbers with the county, the unit counts are off on there. And there were, there were three of them that were off. So that brings you under the fifty percent. And nobody responded back to us, so they said to come to this meeting and we would find out.
Wally, do you know who was supposed to?
We could do this now, the city engineers here, city attorney, I think both were to look at this. Do you want to speak to it now, or do you want to wait till the item is pulled off consent?
I gave you the, I had given him the PIN numbers of the units that were, I went to the county site, and you checked them out there, and you do not have fifty percent.
Alderman Rainey?
I just wanted to know which one are we talking about?
A six.
A six? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, normally we wouldn't do this part of public comment, but we'd like to do it now.
I would like to do this now. If he was promised that we would have an answer, I think we should have an answer.
Right.
They don't, I can, on that list, you can just, give you the PIN numbers, and if you go to online, you could look at the county site. There are one units, you've got them counted, it's two. There's three properties, so that brings you under the fifty percent.
I'm not sure they got an answer.
Madam Mayor, perhaps what we could do is let the gentleman speak with the Assistant City Manager and the City Engineer and see if we can resolve the matter before the item comes up at the consent calendar.
All right.
There's two things. That, and then the other thing, like my son said, he's paying like for twelve-and-a-half percent of the alley. This is, it's not just, it's not fair.
Talk with the engineer. That concludes public comment and brings us to Special Orders of Business, City of Evanston's Youth and Young Adult Division.
Yes, Madam.
City Manager?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Alderman Miller had requested an update on the staffing of the division. Mr. Hemingway is here with a report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Clerk Green, City Manager. I have a brief presentation for you this evening, just to give you all, I know all of you are aware of our Youth and Young Adult Division and the fantastic work they do. Here's a brief presentation and update. The Youth and Young Adult Division, which is housed in the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department, is a staff with a community services manager. We have an assistant program coordinator. You'll see we have five You'll see we have five full-time outreach workers and two part-time outreach workers, of which one is currently vacant, and we are recruiting to fill. The Youth and Young Adult Corps, they use five core strategies. And these strategies are listed on the board here. Community mobilization is where staff uses the involvement of local citizens, including former gang-involved youth. Community groups, agencies, and coordination of programs and staff functions within and across various agencies. The next one is opportunities provision. That is the development of a variety of specific education programs, training and employment programs, targeting at-risk and gang-involved youth and young adults. A third core strategy is social intervention. This is where involving youth and youth-serving agencies, schools, grassroots groups, faith-based organizations, the police, and other juvenile and criminal justice organizations, in reaching out to at-risk and gang-involved youth and young adults and their families. We try linking them to the conventional world and all of the needed services that they need. The fourth core strategy is suppression, which is formal and informal social control procedures, including case management and monitoring of at-risk and gang-involved youth and young adults by the juvenile criminal justice system, and also by community-based agencies, schools, and grassroots groups. And our fifth core strategy that we use is organizational change and development. It's development and implementation of policies and procedures that result in the most effective use of available and potential resources within and across agencies to better address the development of at-risk and gang-involved youth and young adults. So, these five core strategies result in this kind of work of our current staff. And I have it listed below, but you can see, we average about a 1 to 40 client, worker-to-client ratio.
Excuse me. I'm told that on the internet, on blogs and whatever, that I don't read, that the rumor is that it's 1 to 300. So, I would like to just reemphasize what you said. It's 1 to 40.
1 to 40. Yes, Madam Mayor.
And I hope the press will report that.
And you can see, there's several bullets here. We bill rapport with young people. We recognize warning signs of criminal or violent tendencies, and so on. It's a second page. This is just the start. And here's additional essential functions and duties of our staff. Assistant, the selection of participants for the Youth and Young Adult Job Training and Employment Program, and so on, and so on. Here's our 2016 budget that's approved by this body. It includes all of our staffing needs. It includes the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program and our current workforce development funding as well. Also, it includes our $40,000 grant that we received from Y O U. Some of our targeted programs, and where we currently are, is we're really are trying to make a change in these young folks' lives. We've targeted several programs to try to give long-term, sustainable opportunities. We have those programs listed here. Obviously, the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program, our partnership with Northwestern University and their Skilled Trades Program, Oakland Community College and the National Able Network, our Truck Driving Training Program, Mr. Davis Floor Installation and Apprenticeship Program, the Certificate of Rehab Program, Building Career Pathways to Sustainable Employment Program. All of these, our staff work very closely with trying to guide young people into these resources so that we can make a sustainable difference in their lives. Here's a number of, or a slide that shows kind of who we've served for the last three years. See, 130 females. The male number should be 556. That's my mistake. I apologize. And you can see some of the education. Some of the clients we have, we work very closely with, are educated and have college degrees, as well as some that has none. So we work with any and everybody in the community who needs some assistance. That concludes my presentation. And again, this was asked for to have, you know, to lead into a discussion by Alderman Miller. At this time, I'll turn it over to Alderman Miller.
Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Let me first begin by saying that you guys do amazing, amazing, amazing work. And I'm not, you know, trying to actually say you should be doing less or anything of that sort. You have eight people on staff. You work with almost 800 kids. Is that correct, give or take? That's an amazing effort that you're doing. I think we should be giving you more resources, and that's why I wanted to have this discussion. This came about because approximately three weeks ago, this is the weekend of the shooting in Orlando, it kind of got missed in everything that went on that weekend. I had a 17-year-old that shot himself in the leg in my ward. And then we look at what happened this last week, where we had three children under the age of 20 that were shot in the City of Evanston as well. I think we need to be doing more to reach these kids. I think we can devote more resources to the problem. And I think your division is where we should be doing it as well. And I've said this, I said this a year ago, last November. It's the beginning of summer, and we've seen an uptick, both actually since the beginning of the year, not even just since the beginning of summer, in shootings in our city. And that's why I wanted to discuss this, because although you are doing great work, we need to give you the resources you need to do even more work in that regard. And that's what I would like to begin the discussion with my colleagues about, and what are their thoughts about, you know, this idea as well. So, if anyone else has any thoughts.
I definitely have some thoughts. What I've been using is strategies for reducing gun violence in American cities. It's best practices. Everytown, we're a member of Everytown, is one of the authors, the National Urban League, and Mayor's Against Illegal Guns, which we're also a member of. According to Strategies for Reducing Gun Violence, one of the things that I've been told by Kevin is that what we need to do is zero in on some of the most heavily gang-involved young people, and have a wraparound strategy with social work and mental health work and workforce development, and eventually, a good job. And if that doesn't work, we have to use the police and simply follow them around until they decide it's easier to leave town. But that's one of the things that we need to be doing, that we have not yet done. And our ratio of outreach workers to young people is actually pretty reasonable, according to the formulas that I've found. So, I think we need to listen to Kevin Brown, who runs the program, who has told me when I asked him what would work, what he would like if he had more resources, he said he needs more opportunities for the young people. And if that's what he thinks we need, then he's my expert on this, and that certainly would be borne out by reading the Strategies for Gun Violence in American Cities, which I'm sure you can get on the internet if you're interested. So, I don't know if Kevin, Kevin is here?
He is here.
Now, I'll ask you to confirm what the mayor just said. No pressure, Kevin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
That is what you told me.
Yes, Madam Mayor, city manager, Bob Kowitz, city clerk, and city council members appreciate the opportunity to share any information on the outreach program. As you know, one of the, I think most of the body knows that my older brother is one of the national experts in this area. And I learned mostly everything that I do know about the area from him. And I did share with the mayor everything that she expressed just a moment ago, that in terms of the size of this city, the number of outreach workers that we do have, that is proportional to other cities that have similar programs. We are in line with them in terms of resources. But what we do need in the program are more additional opportunities for the people that we do encounter, particularly for the high-risk people. As you know, we have a partnership with Northwestern University, the building, the Skilled Trades Program. It's programs like that. That program starts people off at about $18 an hour. It provides mentoring for the participants. It gives them a real job opportunity, and it's a sustained program that lasts one year. So it's those types of opportunities targeted towards high-risk people that are making the difference and are part of what we see across the nation that's reducing gun violence and violence in the community. So, there's a lot of research on it. There was something that came out today that Mr. Bob Kowitz forwarded to me on the BAM program, which is a great program in Chicago, and it also validates the research that sustained, engaged relationships with young people in general that are sustaining, are effective in reducing violence.
I have one more question. That is, apparently, on the internet, there's some misconception that you all take guns off the streets. Isn't that the police?
Right. So, we, I'm not sure where that kind of thing comes from. I've told people oftentimes that our outreach workers are not police officers. What they do are build relationships with individuals in the community, particularly high-risk individuals, and lead them in a positive direction. So, you know, we're not involved or engaged in police activities.
Thank you. Alderman Miller.
And I agree that, you know, what we need to do is build relationships with, call it the most at-risk youth, or even the ones on the path to being the most at-risk, however you want to quantify that. My question to you is this: if we're going to target, you know, again, the most likely potential offenders, in a sense, let's say we had, you know, our top at-risk youth as part of a new strategy, this is something new we're going to be asking you to be doing to devote more time to the hardest individuals. I personally don't think you have the resources to do that. We're asking you to do even more than what you've done before, to actually take further in-depth action with really tough cases. So, do you really think you have the resources to do the current job you're doing and also reach those people you need to?
So, I think, I think the real question is, based on the research and the work that we've done, we have identified who are really high-risk people in this community. It's a very small number, in terms of people that are engaged possibly in gun activity. In terms of resources, what is really needed are the opportunities to take those individuals and put them in situations where they can be successful. So, for example, in Richmond, California, there's a program, it was featured on public radio, it was written about in the New York Times. It's been in operation over a three-year period. It's been evaluated. Homicides were reduced in that town, which is very different from Evanston, by 50% the first year of that program. And it's being studied and actually considered for implementation in five major cities in America. We have, in our community, an abundance of resources and an abundance of institutions that, one of the things that we're doing is discussing and talking with those individuals to figure out how we can best collaborate to build that kind of a program. So that's not necessarily using additional individuals within our office. That's more coordinating with the resources that are currently available, looking and evaluating our budget, seeing where we might be able to extend our resources and services with our partner institutions.
Another thing, I'm not opposed to, you're saying, providing opportunities, in a sense. But I think there's another thing that we're not discussing as well, is the mental health aspect of this as well. And speaking of studies too, I have, the United States Agency for International Development did a cross-comparational study of over 1,000 violence reduction methods, found that focused deterrence, what you're doing, in a sense, is building relationships with at-risk individuals, working with them to connect them with services. That was very effective. I agree with that. But the thing we aren't talking about is, the other thing that was very effective was mental health treatment for these individuals. I mean, it's one thing to connect them, in a sense. I mean, what are we doing to actually provide those services for the most at-risk individuals? The mental health services.
So, I think we need to have, you know, our health department here to talk about the things, you know, I'm not an expert in the health area. I am an expert in terms of building these kinds of programs, but what we do is help people to reach the services that are currently available to them, and then to partner with them and help and assist to mentor those individuals so that they can have a sustained effect.
And I also want to bring up the comment that even if we are staffed at a comparable level to other communities, we might have more of a need here than other places as well. I mean, right now, we've had, this year alone, three murders in the City of Evanston. We've had two, we've had three within the City of Evanston.
Two murders in the City of Evanston, one of an Evanston resident in Chicago.
Okay. My apologies, in a sense. Okay, so we've had three Evanston residents murdered. Okay. It's my fault on that. We have seen an increase in shootings in the city as well. If we're not proactively addressing this and putting more resources towards it, the problem is getting worse. And it is, in year-over-year shootings. So we should be doing something in that regard, even if we're at a level comparable to other cities. I think we need to increase that as well, to make sure we're doing more to address this problem, to stem off the problem. And again, I'm not, this is not directed at you. You're doing an amazing job with what you've got. I think it's our decision and our discussion, actually, we should be doing more about it in our community. That's my contention.
Thank you. Are you finished? Alderman Wilson.
As long as you have a problem, something more needs to be done, right? Because the problem's not solved. But of course, society and culture has had these kinds of problems forever, right? Since, you know, we came out of caves. So, violence is certainly a problem and a plague. But I've talked to you about these issues, and I think I hear what you're saying. And we have, I think, as far as the people that are on the streets doing an excellent job with probably enough capacity to have the contacts that we need to have to put people in touch with resources that they need, that's not really where we are maybe falling short. It's a question of the outreach workers, they're selling an idea, okay? They have a product. The product is, you can have an alternative life path. You can make different choices. But when they're out there having that conversation, they need to be able to deliver. They need to be able to have a tangible, something, someplace, some alternative that's suitable for the specific individual that they're talking to. Mr. Hemingway showed us a chart. Some kids are college, perfect. College-educated, some college, no diploma, some with a criminal history, you know, can they get an expungement? You know, there are a wide range of problems and things that the youth are encountering. So, one of the things, I think, that troubles me a lot when we have these conversations all of the time, is that how do we define success? Because a thing happens doesn't mean that we're not successful. It doesn't mean that you're not successful. I want to be just really clear that that's not how I perceive it. A lot of, it's very apparent that a lot of people in the community have not enough idea of the resources that are out there, or what's happening, or don't have a good enough of the resources that are out there or what's happening, or don't have a good enough idea. I see, you know, people who are fond of posting things on Facebook, enough, we have to say no. Well, saying no doesn't do anything. Or, or what can I do? There are things that people can do. If you're, if you're interested in some specific issue, there's something in place. There's a place for you. There's, there's an organization in Evanston that can put you to work tomorrow. And it's a question of taking that step to find out what, what you can do. If you have a business and you want to take a chance and employ a high-risk individual, go ahead and take the chance. But you, you do that with the knowledge that it's high-risk. It's called high-risk for a reason. And I just want to, I guess, acknowledge and validate that. You know, putting, putting, you know, four or five more people to go out and find the kids, you know where the kids are. You don't have to find them, right? The police department knows where they are. Your, your team knows where they are. They don't have to find them. What we need to deliver on as a community are the opportunities. That's, that's the word that keeps coming up, is how can we deliver for the kids to show them that there's something else out there? Money's finite, and, and we're mindful of that, too. I don't want there to be a perception that we don't care. We all care a great deal, but we're just having to make, you know, make decisions on, on the resources. We want to continue to fund the mental health programs that are already in place. We want to continue to, to help out our, our nonprofit partnerships. There's a lot that's being done, and we can do more, but we have to allocate our resources in a smart and intelligent way. And as the mayor said, there, there is, there is a plan, and there are plans, and there are people that are working so diligently and, and, this is probably the longest speech I ever gave, but I guess I care about it. But to, to say otherwise or to imply otherwise is, to me, it's dismissive of the efforts that go on in the community, and I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I think that, that credit should be given. And, you know, if, if you want to do something, find out where you can walk in tomorrow and where you can make a contribution. So it's not really directed at you, it's directed at all of us. But I just want people to, to know that, that there's an awful lot of opportunity for, for those who want to help, to help the kids who need that help.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for your responses to my inquiries earlier. I have a couple of questions. Number one, can you explain our interaction and involvement and cooperation with Y O U? And how are their outreach workers different than ours, or are they not?
They are, just to take the question about our interaction with Y O U outreach workers, we received a grant, federal grant, three years ago to, to do the work that we're doing in terms of outreach. They also received dollars to support the program, to go into our community, into the streets, and target runaway, runaway youth as well as high-at-risk youth. Their outreach workers operate in the same capacity as our outreach team. We've taken recently to meeting with them on a monthly basis so that we could coordinate our caseloads and talk about cases that we may have in common, to share resources with them, and basically just to generally talk about your ward, the South area, and what additional things that we can provide to the young people in that community.
What, what are the qualifications? What are the backgrounds we look for, for an outreach worker?
It's, you know, it really, it really varies. I mean, we obviously have a, through our human resources, a structured qualification summary. But the most effective people for our community and in most communities across the country, when you grow up in the community, you go to those community schools, you know the people within the community. Actually, if you've had trouble in a nonviolent fashion, somewhat of a criminal history, that has proven to be an effective deterrent for others if you've gotten yourself on the right path. When we looked at, you may remember when we brought T.O. Hardeman to the city of Evanston when he was running the ceasefire program, and he spoke at the high school, and he shared, we actually hired a ceasefire member for a year who worked with our staff, on the training of our staff. And one of the things that we, we learned, and our staff learned, is you may start out in that fashion where you're not very well-educated and from a formal basis, but I think mostly all of the ceasefire staff that we interacted with had gone and obtained their master's degrees. But the most effective thing is believability in the community, and someone who has had a struggle and overcome that struggle. Those, according to the research, those are the most effective people.
I'm concerned about, Alderman Miller mentioned the three people that were shot on one evening, but actually, that weekend, there were four people shot. And I don't, I'm not recalling right now their ages, but in the past six months, have we been engaged with any victims of gunfire? I mean, actually wounded people? Any of the, our clients?
When, when you've mentioned that question, we know the individuals who are engaged in that activity. Those, I think that the, the people who were engaged in the last shooting are not in our client base. What tends to happen as we do outreach is we do target everyone, we target the highest risk, but not everyone becomes case, a case-managed client. And that is the, the issue and the challenge that I think we're trying to address that speaks to the issue of opportunity, is one of the reasons that we believe we haven't been as effective reaching shooters, so to speak, is really having something that we could deliver them into and say, this is, this is more valuable than what you're engaged in currently.
I have a theory about, I'm not talking about the shooters, because of course, we don't know who they are.
Right.
But the shooters frequently are first victims, and then they become shooters, taking care of business. So I'm wondering, do you avoid being involved with the victims of gunfire?
No. I mean, we're actually engaged in helping the victims of the last situation. We, we met with them, we've met with them, I would say, at least five times over the last five days.
So you, I, my question was, I, but you weren't, they weren't clients, or they weren't involved, I don't even know if clients--
They weren't engaged.
They weren't engaged prior to being shot?
Right.
Well, I think you'll be doing a great service if those victims do not become part of the criminal justice system, having guns and shooting others. So, I mean, that, that is something, folks. I mean, I know it's not much, but it is, it is something.
I, I think, Alderman Rainey, too, I would add that there, of the hundreds of people that we have served, who's to say? But I do believe that of those hundreds of people, there were people that could have been engaged in activities, but what, but for our intervention, are not engaged in those activities now.
How, how do you refer, and responding to Alderman Miller, how do you refer people to mental health services?
Oftentimes, we are approached by individuals who express a need, and because we are linked to some of the services, we will help facilitate their access to the service by either taking them to the hospital, or to a substance rehab institution, or helping them to complete the paperwork, or navigate the process.
And Alderman Rainey, I think, as you know, and the rest of the council, we have had a contract with President's Health for the last probably four years now, three years, four years. And so that's been a very useful entry point. So they may not provide every service, as Mr. Brown is indicating, but they're a resource to our staff for all Evanston residents, so not just at-risk youth. But really, it's an issue we're facing throughout the community. And so that contract with President's Health has been very helpful. It's been a very important tool with us.
And we saw today on the Bills list, at least I did, I don't know who else reads them, that we paid Trilogy for mental health training. And I asked two, it was four, and they said for the Health Department.
So, so Director Thomas Smith, I, I think very much sees the role of the Health and Human Services Department as really being a key ally here, and I know, has been much more involved, probably the last six months to a year, working with her staff. We have added a position within our, our general assistance group, which helps non-general assistance individuals in the community. And I know they've, you've been working with him as well. So, so that's a big part of what we're doing. And I think, as we look at the 2017 budget, Mr. Hemingway, Mr. Brown, and I have already had discussions about what, the very topics you're talking about this evening, what we can do to bring forward in the 2017 budget, these additional monies for opportunities for youth.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first, Alderman Miller, thank you, of course, for, for raising this issue, because it does allow us as a council to say to Evanston that this is a very important issue. And for Mr. Brown, I mean, if you look at those stats, we, we started this discussion, is a point of history for Alderman Miller, back in 2015, sitting at a table in the automatic library when you were interviewed, myself, the mayor--
2012.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, for the correction. With the mayor, Alderman Holmes, eventually, the city manager, we added our police department, our law department, our HR department, in, in really methodical steps to get this thing right. And I truly don't believe that you, your department, under the leadership of Director Hemingway now, formerly the leadership under Joe McCray, get the credit that you deserve for the number of lives that you have changed. And I'm so thankful to be able to see a slide like this. I mean, here we are talking about three shootings. I think the real story is the 800 residents that you have made a huge impact in their lives, that I would summarize, the 51 college students, the 49, 100, 491 diplomas, 123 GEDs, diplomas, and looking at the nine college degrees as tax-paying citizens. And I think that that's a huge, huge, huge accomplishment for you and your team. So congratulations on that. The other things that I wanted to share is, and unfortunately, I've had an eyewitness with Alderman Holmes, as well as the mayor, and I'm sure Alderman Rainey, to see your outreach team in action. And they are. Every single time that I'm at a shooting, they are there. They're there with the families. They know intimately what's going on in the streets, and it is a very delicate balance between what they're doing to produce these numbers and to interact with, with the shooters that are out there. I think Chief Eddington, in his reports, has, correct me if I'm wrong, probably identified anywhere from maybe 35 to 50 potential shooters that are out there, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And I'm glad that we haven't Evanston Police Department, because I don't know if I would want to get additional outreach workers interacting with those shooters. So thank God we have a police department. And I will sum it up by saying, I think it was Chief Eddington, and again, I may be wrong, we, we meet as a, as a team when I'm available, the mayor, Alderman Holmes, chief of police, Mr. Brown, Mr. Hemingway, the Health Department on a monthly basis, to discuss, review these numbers. And he likened adding one additional outreach worker as having, as adding 25 new police officers. Who's going to support them? Who's going to provide the training? Who's going to supervise them? So that, that really helped to put this conversation that we've had in the past into context right now. So I am definitely thankful. I'm going to support your recommendation that you just shared, Mr. Director Hemingway, as well. I think we do need to find additional opportunities for the number of kids that you're saving. And the only thing that I would add that maybe we don't do, and maybe you can correct me, is I would love to find additional training opportunities for you and your staff, opportunities for them to go out to some of these national conversations that you just shared, so they can not only participate, but share the wonderful work that they're doing here in, in Evanston. So please, from me, from the council, the residents, pass along our gratitude to your team and all the wonderful work that you're doing, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would like to agree with Alderman Braithwaite. I think you do a tremendous job. I think our young people deserve and need the very best there is. And I think our community deserves the very best that there is. And I think you and your outreach workers are, are that very best and exactly what we need. And I think we need to listen to you and follow your lead in terms of what you need, rather than decide on our own what, with all the best intentions of the world, what sounds good. I, I believe in following best practices, and I believe in, I believe in you, and I believe that you and your group know what we need, and we should listen to you and follow your lead. And I am fully supportive of looking for more opportunities.
I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. And I, I again appreciate what the council has done in supporting all these programs that we were able to start over the last three years that have had a significant impact. Who's to say what would happen, what would have happened if we didn't have the infrastructure that has been built?
You've done a fabulous job. Alderman Rainey.
I just want to comment for one moment on the quality of work that young people need to start out in. There's a project going on right now where someone from Northwestern or someplace is calling around, I guess, all the Aldermen, I'm not sure, asking us what our first, Youth Job Center, what was our first job? I mean, here we are, some of us are old, some of us, but what was your first job? And their, their approach is, you know, look, look how you started out, you know, and look where you are today. And, you know, some people are just at the top of their retail profession, some people are, you know, the mayor, some people are city clerk, some people are, you know, in a county supervisor's position. And I just thought that was really interesting. And when I sat here tonight, listening to Goodwill, they're going to hire 60 people. Those are not jobs requiring a college degree, and those are jobs that will teach organization. You have to organize things. You have to, you know, make decisions about the quality of the items coming in. I think it would be a great opportunity for us to go after Goodwill and get them to include maybe, you know, however many you would, you could move into that, that spot. And I, I think we ought to be really serious about that. It's one thing to have a job fair and have kids from all over come, you know. I, I think we should target some of our kids, some of our young people.
I did speak to the young woman when she left, and we are going to sit down and meet and talk about how we can integrate the program.
Absolutely. And, I mean, because they, they could reserve a certain number of those jobs. And they, you know, like she said, the person who is now CEO, started out starting close. So it's, it's not, everybody doesn't have to be trained to be, you know, an engineer or something at the beginning. You have to start someplace.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the elected officials' compensation. Al, Erica, Al.
Good evening. My name's Al Telscher. I was chairman of the mayor's compensation committee this year, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
It was my pleasure, and I think we all kind of enjoyed it and learned something in doing it. But Madam Mayor, city manager, Alderman, and all the rest, I hope everybody has had a chance to read our report. It was available online. The minutes of each of our meetings were also available online. That might have given you a little bit more detailed information about what was going on. I think I can just summarize briefly what we decided to do. Happy to answer questions if people are interested in what led us to our conclusions. But we, one thing I should say before I summarize is, we had, I was on this committee four years ago, and there were a number of things that were different and much, much better this year. We got a much earlier start. We were able to get much more useful information from Mr. Green and from Ms. Storey and Ms. Lynn, the Human Resources Manager, and those-- And those, the data we got for our deliberations, I think, which are quite, go back sometime, almost 40 years in a few cases, will serve future committees well in terms of what we had to do. So with four people on the committee, there were four different opinions. One person argued, I think, in a very convincing way, for a substantial increase, that is, on the order of 50% or more, in Aldermanic stipends. One person held an opinion that said we shouldn't exceed the COLA increases of that 2%, 2.5%. That has been the history over the last three or four years in the city. And a couple of us sort of were willing to go one way or the other. So through a lot of discussion and considering a number of different ideas in terms of how we might view compensation, we finally ended up with the recommendations that you read about, namely that we would recommend an increase in Aldermanic stipends of $3,000 starting May 1, 2017, and held at that level for four years. That amount in percentage terms worked out to 23.1%. We sort of took the dollar number and generated the percentage figure and proposed that the mayor also receive an increase of 23.1% beginning next May. And in our discussions concerning the city clerk's compensation, we saw that the city clerk, first of all, is a full-time position. The Alderman and mayor are part-time positions. The city clerk has a more complete range of benefits available to him than the Aldermen do. You all are eligible if you choose to take health insurance coverage. Some do, some don't, some take smaller policies, some take larger policies. We got into some discussion about how we might deal with that health insurance aspect in terms of the total compensation package. We decided it was best left alone because the city council and the city itself has no direct control over health insurance costs. So what we were left with was to decide about Aldermanic and mayoral compensation and city clerk compensation. The numbers are outlined, and some of our reasoning is outlined in the report. And I think I'm happy to take questions if anybody has any.
Well, city clerk?
Early I spoke, early I spoke to Mayor Tisdale and asked if it was proper for me to make comments during this compensatory recommendations. And she said yes, and to just flick the light on and go from there. Well, I want to thank Mayor Tisdall for allowing me this opportunity to share this information with you, the council. In addition to the duties of the city clerk by Illinois law, the city clerk performs regular office duties and many other services to the community and the local government he or she serves. That office is also the only full-time elected official in Evanston, as you all know, and along with the mayor, is elected into the office by the registered voters in the city. On the other hand, the Aldermen are only elected by the registered voters in their wards. The purpose of appointing a compensatory committee was for that committee to recommend the salaries of the elected officials 180 days before a new term of office begins. Right now, you are at about 255 days out. It was surprising to me, after regarding the minutes of the compensatory committee and their recommendations for the elected officials, they recommended 23% increase in the salaries and stipends of both the mayor and the Alderman. As for the salary and stipend for the clerk, it was recommended a cost of living increase for four years of the term. To validate the reason for the clerk receiving a cost of living increase, the clerk was identified and described as a full-time, non-union employee of the city by the compensatory committee. However, no elected official has ever been identified as anything other than an official working for the municipality, the township, or the state they serve. The city clerk's position is not hired by the city council, nor the city manager. He or she is an elected official, just like the other elected officials here in Evanston. And there is no distinction when all are voted into office. Is it not prudent to establish a fair compensatory model for all city officials, elected or not? There may have been some confusion, because I do believe that at one time, the city clerk was a part-time position. But that position changed in 1993, when Sandra Gross, and then Christine Davis, and then Mary Morris, and then me, when I came in in 208, 209. I hope that information that I provided will have you to see the need to look into this matter before making decisions for the compensation for all future elected or appointed officials, whether full-time or part-time here in Evanston. I bring this information to you, to the city council, at this time, because there is still ample time to decide on a just compensation for all. There are over 300-plus days before the next election of April 4, 2017. And I'm looking forward to make sure that this comes out clear, that is, for any future city clerk who comes in after me, that they will also have the same opportunity to be not classified as a non-union, full-time city employee, but as an elected official, just like all the ones at this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I have a lot to say about this, but I want to comment on Clerk Green's comments. I felt from reading the report of the Compensation Committee that their proposal is not, I don't think it's legal. And the reason I don't think it's legal is because the compensation for elected officials, while you can build in raises, as we've done in the past, for example, you could have recommended this year that the council get a $3,000 raise this year, a $3,000 raise next year, for all four years. I don't believe that you can say to the city clerk, your salary is going to be increased by whatever the non-union employee increase is, because you don't know what that's going to be. So we really don't know what Clerk Green's increases are going to be over the four years. And this is just a technical issue, not how much he's going to get, or whether he's, he's definitely not an employee. So I think unless you set the absolute rate of his increases for the next four years, that you can't just throw it out there like that. I don't think that's legal. It has to be, the four years have to be clarified at the beginning of, prior 180 days prior to the term.
Ms. Metzenkopp, I would ask you, we have an attorney here.
Can I? Let me just make one brief comment. First of all, if there is a question of legality, I plead guilty. I'm not a lawyer. Secondly, this was provided to city staff, well, the date on the report is June 7. If there was any, anything illegal in it, then we should have been notified about it. Thirdly, just to complete Mr. Green's comments a little bit, the very afternoon that we concluded our meeting, I understand there was a memo that went out from the city manager's office, I got a phone call from Mr. Green. I thought that was inappropriate, quite honestly. We talked, we had an amicable conversation. I know him from my service on this committee four years ago. He's been very friendly, very helpful. If some of the language is inappropriate or illegal, we can change it. I'm happy to do whatever you think is most appropriate, but I feel a little bit accused of something without having known ahead of time that I was supposed to comply with certain rules.
I'm just commenting. I'm not accusing you. I don't think, I just, from what I've read about the legislation, the salary has to be absolutely fixed, 180 days. And if it's, if it's something that hasn't been decided until the non-union employees get their decided raise, I mean, if the city manager knows what the next four years raises are going to be, fine, then you can put that in.
Well, then, we should have been told that. I'm sorry. Well, that can be fixed.
Well, I would agree with you that that can be fixed. So Alderman Rainey, did you?
Well, I don't know if other people want to speak to the city clerk issue.
Your light is the only one on, so.
But I'm finished with the city clerk.
Okay.
So should I start on?
Go ahead.
Okay. I don't know if you felt it was inappropriate that I came to a couple of your meetings, but I felt it was very inappropriate for the Compensation Committee to operate in a vacuum, and I wanted to have some input. So I hope you weren't offended by my presence.
I don't think we operated in a vacuum. It was an open meeting, and there were other people there.
Great, excellent. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So if it was a vacuum, you were sucked into it just the right way.
No, no, no. I voluntarily attended a couple of your meetings. And one of the meetings I attended, you did have a discussion about the opportunity for council members to get insurance. And that is a wonderful thing and a wonderful opportunity that we all have. However, I put up together a chart showing what all the Aldermen received for insurance. And it is very, our compensation is a stipend, as you say. And our stipend for employee-paid insurance is, it's very inequitable. And one of the things that I would like to say to this council is, never in a million years would I ever say that anybody shouldn't select the insurance that they need. And I support that wholeheartedly. But when members of this council receive $18,000 of city-supported insurance, and I'm, that doesn't include what you pay, because that insurance that is $18,000 is $20,418, and you all, of course, pay more than those of us who don't have families or spouses. But when the insurance for some members of the council is provided for by the city at the cost of an additional $12,000, $15,000, $16,000, our pay is not equitable, because you have to consider that as part of the stipend. So I want to suggest that nobody, but nobody be brought down in terms of the value of their insurance, or the cost of their insurance, but those of us who don't benefit from that subsidy or compensation, that we in some way receive an additional stipend to make us more equal to you. And I'm going to propose that, this is just for introduction, right? And also, it seems to me that this conversation should be at the Rules Committee, but it's not. So that's, you know, when you say, when you say 23%, our increase is 23%. 23% brings our increase up to $15,990. So, you know, it's less than the people at Goodwill get for a full-time job. And I'm, you know, I'm only considering myself a 30 to 35-hour-a-week person. But another thing I argued at the Compensation Committee is, you can't consider us a five-day-a-week group. I mean, we spend seven days a week. I spent over 10 hours on one case this weekend. And I know others do, too. And while we do it for the satisfaction and the good work that we do and the goodwill we bring to the city, we, it is sometimes humiliating telling people how much we make. And I frequently say, oh, not much, you know, when they ask. So I think the compensation is completely unequal. Alderman Miller receives no insurance whatsoever, and that's his choice. I'm sure he maybe gets it someplace else. Others receive something else. But seven of us have very, very wonderful insurance. And some people have insurance that generates a cost to the employer of $18,000, some of us six, some of us five, some of us none. And it makes it inequitable.
Most of, one of the issues that came up, and Mr. Green provided us with a lot of data on this, is what we call comparables. We all are familiar with that phrase. It's a thing that we use when we talk about property taxes. It's really hard to find comparables around, in this northern Illinois area. We looked at median incomes, we looked at median home values, we looked at population. Those are the only three categories for which we had data for all of the communities that we were given comparables. When you look at Aldermanic stipends, Evanston stands out in several ways. One is, I don't think, either we didn't get full information, or in fact, this is the case, that Aldermen in these other comparable, so-called comparable communities, don't get health insurance benefits at all. So in one sense, the Evanston Aldermen benefit substantially more than the so-called comparable communities. Secondly, at least as far as we got in the information that we were given, 45 committees is that, I don't know if that number is actually correct, but if it is, there are 45 committees that Evanston Aldermen are involved in in some way. There isn't another community that's even close to that. The next highest was 20 committees, and all the others were five or so. So we recognize that Evanston Aldermen put a lot of time and effort into the jobs that you do for the city. And that was a driving force in our recommending a substantial bump in your compensation. Now, Mr. Green has two full-time employees that work for him. That number has varied over the last 20 or 30 years, but now you have two full-time people working in your office. The Aldermen don't have any full-time people. So we, so there was some significant discussion about raising Aldermanic stipends to 20,000. That was strongly opposed by most of the committee, but there was one person that continued to argue for it. One person on the committee was adamant about proposing COLA increases across the board. So this was kind of a, for us, a, what we thought was an acceptable middle position. And if the language in here isn't proper and legal, we'll fix it.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm not comparing my town to anybody else, and I'm not comparing my work or my stipend to anybody else's community's stipend. What I am doing is I'm comparing it to the other people that are my colleagues. And I don't see how we can look at this and say, it is fair that some Aldermen receive 30-some thousand dollars in stipend, and others receive, what, others receive 15, 12? It's not fair. And it's not, it's not your fault.
We didn't see a way to solve that problem, Alderman Rainey. I agree with you, there's inequity there. It's up to you to figure out what to do about it.
And I am, really, I'm sorry if you thought I was asking you to do it. I really think my colleagues ought to take a look at this and figure this out. You have delivered this report to us, which I, you know, I appreciate it.
Accept it or not?
Pardon me?
You may accept it or not.
Well, I mean, we'll definitely accept it and then work on it, maybe. But it's not equitable, and I don't think any of you think it is. If I had a family right now, I would be having the same insurance as you do. And somebody else, or I would even be bringing this up, that some of you are just not, you're not being, your stipend is less than it should be because I'm getting more than you are. In this case, it's the opposite. And when you look at the numbers, it is glaring. It is really glaring and really unfair. And so I am asking that we consider, since we have, we're like a few days ahead of time with this report, thank you for the committee, that we consider this issue. And I cannot believe that those Aldermen who are receiving an additional $18,000 subsidy, aren't going to consider those of us who are not receiving that, because it's not fair.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Clerk Green, and then Alderman Fisk. And I would remind you, it's 10:20.
It's my bedtime. It's my bedtime.
It's the committee chairman's bedtime. All right. You think Alderman Fisk was before Clerk Green? Sorry, Alderman Fisk.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Did the committee look at the, any of the benefits, the insurance benefits at all?
You mean the nature of the benefits?
Just the breakdown of benefits, alderman by alderman? I mean, are?
No, we were not given individual aldermanic benefit numbers. We were given the average benefits paid to all of the elected officials.
Okay.
And that's about $7,000 average.
Okay. So, for example, if there were aldermen who were covered by Medicare, that, which is taxpayer-supported, that wouldn't be?
We didn't get any information about that.
Okay, all right. Well, that would be information, I guess, if we're going to proceed with this conversation that I would like to get as well.
This information, I did not get.
No, I'm not saying that you did, it's just that.
We did not have individual aldermanic benefit information.
I understand. I just called up and asked for it and got it.
But I think the argument can be made, I mean, if there are some people on the council who are receiving, you know, Medicare benefits that aren't reflected here, that that would sort of change the numbers.
Yeah, we were told, I don't know the number, two or three of the 11 individuals received no health insurance benefits from the city, and the highest individual was the $17,000 figure, 18, whatever it is.
There were three of them.
Whatever. But we were not given individual information. And it was outside our purview. We didn't, we didn't, I mean, it's hard enough to figure out how to decide what we should ask the city to pay aldermanic stipends. Go tell Blue Cross that they, you know, if they're going to propose a 26% increase next year, that, no, 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 the Compensation Committee in Evanston said it's 3%, sorry. You know, so we just stayed away from that. We couldn't do anything about it.
No, I understand.
Thank you. Clerk Green?
The comment you made was that the clerk has two full-time employees other than the clerk himself, but when I came on in 2009, there were two full-timers and three part-timers. They, three that were on up, there's only one, one full-timer and a part-timer. So I don't see how it could be, again, compared to how you came up with the idea, because I'm a full-time, the clerk is a full-time position, which is part of what the city code states, that you could come up and say that now the clerk is no longer an official, but he's a non-union employee of the city.
Well, that is a language problem.
I know it's a language problem.
I'm really sorry about it. We'll change it.
I know it's a language problem. Okay, change that, and we go on. You cannot separate elected officials from elected officials.
If anybody had told me that before tonight, believe me, it would have been different.
All right, this is for information only. Introduction, sorry, it is for introduction. Seeing no other lights, city clerk, would you call the roll?
So, so you've got multiple items.
Oh, we have, hold on. How do you want us to vote on this?
They have not even been moved at this point.
All right, someone needs to make a motion.
I'll move for introduction, SP four.
How about two, three, and?
No.
SP two.
Staff would recommend one at a time.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Thank you. All right, clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
The motion passes. Got it.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move item SP three for introduction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce SP three, ordinance 64016. City clerk?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Miller.
It's not legal.
Clerk Green, I think we should work on something, I mean, the next two weeks, just for introduction purposes. Aye, but let's work something out.
Aye. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
It's six to one.
Motion passes. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like a complete report from our legal department regarding legislation that requires us to set our salaries in full 180 days before, and how the recommendation for the clerk meets that.
Law Department will have it ready.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Wait a minute, which one are we on?
Should be on SP four.
SP four, Madam Mayor.
Oh, we are.
Want me to move that one also?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to move item SP four for introduction.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 65016. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
The motion passes. SP five, we really haven't discussed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there are some additional issues, which staff would appreciate direction from the council prior to the new council regarding communications issues. Perhaps this is something that could be referred to a committee, perhaps this goes back to rules, there would just be good to get some clarification, I don't, I'm not sure that tonight's the evening, to discuss that.
All right, let's not discuss it tonight. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, move SP five, aldermanic communications allowance to the Rules Committee.
Second, second.
All right. We don't have to vote on sending it to Rules, do we?
A voice vote, probably.
All in favor of sending it to Rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we do that, there's an executive session that is scheduled for the conclusion of this meeting. It's 10:30. We have outside counsel here. Would be our recommendation, my recommendation, in conferring with Alderman Wilson, to put that executive session off until your next meeting on July the 11th.
And, yeah, we haven't even done the consent agenda, so I'll move that we defer on the executive session till the next meeting.
Second.
It's going to take a while, and do we want to be here till?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of course, there's always the possibility we could put everything on consent.
We just, could we just try?
All right, Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, we request the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 20th. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask your approval of the City of Evanston payroll through June 12, $2,834,848.3. The city bills June 28, there is an amendment, that number should be $2,873,719.74. We request the following vehicle replacement purchases be approved for the police and fire departments. They consist of 17 units for the police department, one unit for the fire department from Curry Motors in the amount of $473,099. We ask your approval of purchase of one recycling vehicle from RNOW Incorporated in the amount of $248,131 for 2016. Request is made for change order number one to the contract of the 2011-15 Management and Operations of Self-Park Facility Contract. It's a prove-up issue. The original estimated cost over the term of the agreement was $9,393,513.44. Those payments have been made today, including the change order. The total comes, that includes a 1.73% variation over the term, $9,555,962.55. Change order number two for the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, the SCADA System Agreement with CDM Smith is an extension of days, 182 days, no additional dollars, and that concludes June 30, 2016. Contract with Alpine Demolition Services for the Lad Arboretum Windmill Demolition in the amount of $22,250. Handyman Agreement with Sam Gossen Associates is requested. It is a one-year agreement with two one-year renewals, not to exceed costs of $50,000 for labor plus materials and supplies. We ask your approval to accept the, to renew the line of credit for $2.2 million with First Bank and Trust to have access to credit up to that amount for the Howard Ridge and West Evanston Tiff districts. This is for acceptance and filing. Request that we open the Harley Clark Mansion for one day during the day, Monday through Friday, on one day, to allow interested parties to tour the facilities. Information regarding how that'll happen will be posted on the city's website. Resolution 50R16 is an easement agreement with Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for existing storm sewers. This is a 25-year agreement terminating on May 20, 2042. We ask your approval for special assessment, no, this is for action, special assessment 1518 for alley paving. Should this be off?
We'd like to take five, six, and seven off.
Oh, five, six, and seven alley paving is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 71016, amendments to landlord-tenant ordinance. This is for approval tonight. The council is being recommended to adopt this ordinance amending the city code landlord-tenant regulations to add landlord-tenant obligations for criminal activity at residential and rental properties. This is, has to do with the agreement of the council to forego the landlord licensing.
Alderman Rainey, I apologize for the interruption. Could you take that off of the consent agenda? It just needs that minor floor amendment.
I thought we were amending A9 explosives.
Oh, A9.
Right?
Yes, A9, you were doing A8, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Yes. This is good to go.
All right, so, and that, my understanding is the only amendment, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
All right, so we're going to remove A9. It's a rather simple amendment, it was an oversight. Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and ordinance 82016 grants a major zoning relief for no additional parking spaces where three are required for medical office. I believe this is off the consent agenda, sorry about that. It's off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 83016 granting a special use for resale establishment, Goodwill Store and Donation Center at 1916 Dempster Street. This is for introduction. Also for introduction is amending the special use for a convenience store at 555 Howard in the B3 district. We're increasing their hours from 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Ordinance 7016 is for action and grants major zoning relief for one additional dwelling unit balconies and building lot coverage, 49493 to 495 Sheridan Road, for action. Human Services Committee this evening recommends additional mental health board funding recommendations for 2016, and includes $15,000 for the Youth Job Center and $15,000 for the City of Evanston Mayor's Summer Youth Program, both of which provide summer jobs to Evanston youth. Ordinance 46016 is. Alderman Rainey, would you remove that, please? Thanks. That will, the beekeeper license will be addressed by the committee chair. The Rules Committee, oh, let's see. May I consult with my colleagues? There's been a request by Alderman Revelle that we postpone dealing with the introduction of all three, O1, O2, and O3, having to do with merging committees, boards and commissions. So that can be addressed by the Rules Committee Chair. I'm taking those off the consent agenda. Madam Mayor has not recommended anybody for boards and commissions, and therefore I move the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to pass. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Miller, would you take us through P and D?
APW, sure. Move approval of ordinance 75-016, which is amendments and nuisance premise ordinance. Do we, I mean, the other, A5 through O7 was removed, that's all I had otherwise. Right, so move approval of that, 75016.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I'd like to add, under the listing that we have for aggravated nuisances, where all the felonies are listed, one was left off, and thanks to Lisa Pulis, she pointed that out to us, it is explosive devices. If you have explosive devices in your apartment, you are an aggravated nuisance. So just add that to the list. I move that amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no lights for discussion. It's been moved and seconded to pass, what's the number of this? Seventy?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, O-16, as amended. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Rainey?
Out of sequence, but I just really want to thank that subcommittee. Alderman Miller and Alderman Wilson were very helpful, as were the citizen members and the audience, the population of landlords who came and helped us with that. And, I mean, just to reduce the shouting and the displeasure is really a pleasure. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we, staff conferred with the gentleman regarding A6 on Darrow. There's some incomplete information that we want to go back and check, and rather than handle the other two, we want to make sure we're all on the same page. So we'll come back on July the 11th. So we'd ask, this will remain then at the council, and we'll have it on the July of the agenda. If you take no action, up or down, as far as I'm concerned, it remains in the council. Madam Mayor, if you wish to have a motion, that this remain in, remain at council, that's for.
Let's make a motion. Then I'll be happier.
Make a motion.
I move that the, the special assessment, the three special assessment issues be held at council.
Agreed.
It's been moved and seconded, we don't need to vote on that.
No.
All right, thank you very much. Planning and Development, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Item P1 is ordinance 82016 granting major zoning relief for no additional parking spaces where three are required for a medical office at 922 Neuse Street. ZBA and city staff are recommending approval of the ordinance granting major zoning relief for no additional parking spaces where three are required for the medical office evolution, spine, and sports therapy at 922 Neuse Street. The applicant has complied with the other zoning requirements and meets the standards of variation. It's being requested that there be a suspension of the rules, but I will move initially for introduction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 82016. City clerk?
Didn't we move?
It was taken off altogether, I believe.
Oh, I thought we moved this.
P1, okay.
You just moved to introduce it.
Okay.
P1?
P1.
Alderman. Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing, the motion passes.
All right, I move that we suspend the rules and take action on the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been, Alderman Fisk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be voting against this. Not critical of the, of the business, but we've been working very hard on Noise Street and in other business districts to retain retail and restaurant on, on the ground floor of our, of our buildings, and I, I believe that this use will and can have a negative effect by taking one of the storefronts off of that, off of Noise Street.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 80, to suspend the rules and, and approve Ordinance 82016 granting major zoning relief for no additional parking spaces where three are required for a medical office at 922 Noise. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Suspension of the rules.
Suspension of the rules.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Six to one.
Six to one, the motion fails. Alderman Wilson, do you have anything else? That's it? And Alderman Fisk, Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is H2 Ordinance 46016, the Beekeeper License Ordinance Amendments. The Human Services Committee and city staff recommend that adoption of this ordinance, authorizing amendments to the sections regarding beekeeping to include a requirement for notice to adjacent neighbors. The proposed recommendations in the ordinance are based on the health and safety of all residents and common best practice for urban beekeeping. In order to minimize negative health and safety impacts for any residents from beekeeping practices, the ordinance requires the beekeeping license applicants to provide proof of notice to all persons or entities that are residential landowners, residential renters, business owners, and/or business occupants with properties that share property lines with the property for which the applicant seeks the license. The amendments also include a procedure by which the Human Services Committee can review and rule on any adjacent neighbor's objection to a license application. I move introduction.
Is there a second? Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to, even though this is just for introduction tonight, I wanted to suggest an amendment to this, that, that the notice requirement be sent out to adjacent property owners rather than neighbors. I think the, sending it out and trying to find out who neighbors are, especially when you might have a large apartment building next door, would be onerous and, and actually work to discourage beekeeping. So I think it's entirely reasonable and, and consistent with our other, our other processes to have notice go out to adjacent property owners with the recommendation that, should it be a rental apartment building, for example, or a multiple office building, that the property owner should notify their tenants.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Alderman Revelle, did you want to?
Well, I was interested in the same kind of amendment. If you look at our ordinance as it applies to keeping hens, we talk about adjacent landowners and not, not the tenants, for example, renters.
All right, so, you two agree on language?
Yes, I would take out adjacent neighbors and put in adjacent property owners.
Okay. That satisfies you, all right. Alderman Rainey.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, can I just, Alderman Rainey, may I just say one more thing? I think that also addresses the concern that we have in this particular case by the, the property owners who raised this issue to Human Services in the first place.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
So when we say adjacent property owners, do we mean the ones that connect to the property, the people across the street, the people behind, the people next door on either side? Is that what we mean?
The, the same way we do for other issues, when we say adjacent property owners.
Two hundred and fifty feet, or 200 feet in other cases. So are we just saying the people that, that literally are across-
That share, that share property lines.
That share property lines.
Right.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what I thought you meant.
But not across the street.
Not across the street, okay.
I, I wouldn't think.
I'm just trying to get adjacent.
All right, Alderman Revelle.
Well, my, my reading of the intent is that, so municipalities and utilities are not considered adjacent neighbors, so it would not be across the street.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
I've been trying to see the actual text of the proposed ordinance, but my concern that also came up in Human Services was that the process for requesting a license and the appeal process all happened well in advance of the summer months that when, as if to not just, you know, if it's going to be approved or not approved, let that beekeeper or neighbor know in advance so that they're not planning a hive and not able to carry out that summer that they're waiting another year, essentially. So I think there needs to be some sort of timing stated unless it's, if it's appropriate. But I think it's important.
Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Revelle.
Yeah, I, Alderman Tendem, I appreciate what you're saying. I think the testimony that we had at, at committee is that the availability of bees and the setting up of hives will probably control that, because after a certain time, the bees, if I have this correct, the bees are no longer available or sold out. So I, I think, I don't think we have to over, overregulate this, because I think it will, it will take care of itself.
Alderman Revelle.
And just to echo Alderman Fisk, I think people who are interested in becoming beekeepers are, get pretty well informed about the timing of getting their bees ordered and would be certainly acting well in time to comply with this notice requirement.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on the motion.
For introduction.
For introduction, yes.
So, Madam Mayor, we're introducing then the amended motion?
We're introducing the amended motion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Beekeeping License Ordinance Amendments.
Alderman, Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Seven to nothing, the motion passes. And then the Rules Committee was all held.
Yeah.
Alderman, when?
One, two, and three.
Alderman Revelle.
Well, I'm, I'm particularly interested in the proposed, the merger they were contemplating of the Environment Board and the Lad Arboretum, and from talking to people in the Lad Arboretum Committee, it didn't seem as though they'd had an opportunity to be able to react to the ordinance and possibly come up with some suggested language, and I didn't know if that, if that pertained to the other three proposed consolidations, whether the various committees have had a chance, it's a question, have the other committees had a chance to digest the proposed new ordinances?
That I don't know. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I, I share that same concern I raised at the last meeting. I'm actually going to move tonight to hold 02, merging of the Environment Board and the Lad Arboretum.
Okay. You just want to hold that one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did we move to hold them all? Oh, all right, I'm sorry, okay.
Alderman Tendem.
I mean, if they're held, they're held, but I, I think the only change in the Housing and Homelessness and Human Relations Commission was adding the word homelessness, and I think the committee did sign off that it was, it was a go, so.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, let's not hold that one, then.
Which one? So which one we not holding?
We've already held them.
It's, it's been all we had.
We're drawing the hold on that one.
Can we unhold them?
No, just, I mean, it's not important.
Okay.
And, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so what would, with the hold, it's a two-week hold, so is it your intention then that this be circulated among the members of all of the groups? Is it the concern just Lad Arboretum and Recreation? Should we have a special meeting of that group? Just looking for directions, what your expectation is in two weeks' time?
Okay, Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Fisk.
Okay, well, from my point of view, it would be important to consult with the Lad Arboretum Committee and, and the Environment Board, I guess, but particularly the Lad Arboretum Committee, because their, their purpose and mission and everything is being totally absorbed into the Environment Board. The other two, I, I don't, I don't have a feeling one way or the other.
All right.
So, Madam Mayor, what, what I'll do then is attempt to convene a, a meeting with both Lad Arboretum and the Environment Board in the next two weeks. We'll circulate 01 and 03 to the other groups. I agree with Alderman Tendem, I think those are, those are less concerning issues, but we'll take that time to do that, and we'll have a report on the 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. That, I think, brings us to call of the wards, Alderman Revelle.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have this card that was sent to all of us about six great chefs, one amazing night, a culinary event benefiting the Farmer's Market Foundation and the Link Matching Program. This event is going to be held on Monday, July 11, from 6:30 to 9:30. I know of 10 or 12 people that can't attend, and we would all be here, so thank you for the invitation, but sadly, we won't be there.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Miller.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to give a hello to, to Alderman Holmes, and I hope that she's doing well, and we haven't had a report, so I hope someone has a report for us, but it sounds like the surgery went well, and Dolores, if you're still up, we're thinking about you. So thank you very much.
She's watching us.
She's watching.
Is she?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Well, Dolores?
Hi, Dolores.
Hi. So that's really nice, so I'm, I'm hoping that she's doing well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank all the residents from Smith Park neighbors that showed up, the second and also fifth ward. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Alderman Revelle, for being there this, this afternoon, or this evening at 5:00. We met for a roll call, just a way of united the neigh, it's a sign of uniting the neighbors in that area to help them feel more comfortable in the park. It was a great opportunity for neighbors to meet and greet with members of the police department, and it was well attended, so thank you all for that. The other thing I want to say thank you and congratulations to our city staff, particularly Director Ivana Thomas. This past weekend, Saturday, I think Alderman Miller showed up, and also, excuse me, Alderman Wilson and Tendem showed up to the city's first Man Up Event, and the city manager was there, also saw Marty Lyons. We had a little friendly joust amongst some other things.
I'm filing a claim.
It was, it was a lot of fun, and hats off to, to Director Thomas Smith and all the staff involved with, with, with pulling off the event. It was, it took us a while to get, get attended, but I understand there was a nice steady stream throughout the day. It was definitely well organized, and I look forward to next year's event. And then, finally, I remember five years ago when we, when we started the conversation about economic development along the Dempster corridor in, in West Evanston, and the many discussions that we had, whether or not we should put a TIF there. And so to the members of, of the planned development, I just want to say thank you very much for your support. It's, I, I find it ironic, some of the conversations regarding the perception of that area, and if you remember, five years ago, the Evanston Plaza was like a ghost town. I think Alderman Rainey used the words tumbleweeds along Dempster. We didn't have any real store footage, and to look at where we've come now, I, I think it's just been a wonderful effort, both from the part of our staff as well as the support of the council. When we looked at the, installing the second TIF, I think we all realized, and it's unfortunate the history is lost, that we really saw it as a short-term, long-term journey. Short-term meaning making sure that we find stores that are going to occupy the plaza, help to revitalize that area, and, and I think we're well, we're well on our way. I always tell people that the second wards is the most economically and racially diverse wards, and I think we're doing well, and the increased development will, will again provide much-needed jobs. It, it helps to provide new ink, tax revenue to our city, and, and more importantly, I think with the investment of the plaza, we're already seeing it, the number of permits, new building going on around in that area is just phenomenal, and I think we will increase, I think we'll increase that over the, the years to come. So I understand the perception of, of neighbors, and I think that's something that I'm going to pay very close attention to as we move forward. But again, thank you all for your support. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson. Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to remind residents, if you're planning to attend the parade, no lawn chairs or other devices can be put on the sidewalks in the 6th, 7th Ward until 6:00 AM on July 1st, that is this coming Friday. Also, what was concerning last year is many, there were several situations that were blocking crosswalks and areas for people with less mobility, and I think that was, well, those, I had, I did call, and they were immediately removed, and I would hope we'd have better sense than to do that. Just a little awareness that we're replacing your furniture, and we will all be happy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We're not going to meet.
Is there a second?
No.
All in favor say aye. We are adjourned.